This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order this the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Just for the sake of clarity, before we go into the budget workshops, this meeting will adjourn, and there is a separate login for the budget workshops that will occur after this meeting. Just some information for anybody who is new and participating in the virtual process. I know it's been over a year, but I just want everybody to know how to play along. Members of the public, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you are the person asking a question. Also kindly keep your camera inactive unless you are speaking. The system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you've been recognized. I do not need a gavel because I have a mute all button. If people are not participating respectfully, I will mute all to allow the person who has the floor to be heard. We'll now proceed to go through the agenda. If you wish to question or comment regarding a particular agenda item, please type into the chat bar that you do, upper right corner. Click on the chat bubble and enter your comments there. I'm going to deal first with people who are logged in digitally, and then I will address those who have dialed in with a telephone. If you intend to comment, whether you're participating through your screen or through your phone, you please, please introduce yourself by giving your name and address. We do have items for executive session tonight. Before, when the council is ready to go into executive session, I will ask those who are not supposed to participate in the executive session to leave the meeting. If you don't leave promptly in the interest of time, I might kick you off. Please don't be offended. I will then lock the meeting. If you'd like to attend the meeting after the council comes out of executive session, you can log in while the meeting is locked. You'll be in the waiting room when I unlock the meeting. You will come out of the waiting room. With that, please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please ball roll?
Yes, good evening. Fishbein.
Here.
Laughin.
Here.
Morone.
Here.
Morganstein. Shortell.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Savoni.
Here.
We please have a motion on the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through O.
Second.
Moved and second of all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, those are all ayes. The consent agenda passes onto item four. There are no items removed from the consent agenda onto the public question and answer period. We'll give that a minute. All right, there appear to be no takers for the public question and answer period. Moving on to item six on the agenda. Mr. Civitelli, do you want my screen?
That would be great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, well, thank you for everybody's time this evening. I'll keep it brief. Obviously, there's a lot on the agenda, so we'll jump right to slide two if that would that would be great, Mr. Chairman. As you could see here, we just updated the total case counts for the town for the given months. I'm still trying to rectify some of the numbers for February. I believe there's more than one hundred and forty-one. So that's something I'm working with the state on to report out. But the March and April statistics right now, that is what is showing and the electronic surveillance system. So those are the most updated total case counts for the months as well as overall. Of note, at this point, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion around hospitalizations increasing in the last, since the last time we had met as a group. However, I will say, probably one of the most important, probably the most important thing I'll make note of tonight is there have not been any fatality since our last report to the council. This could be a result of the vaccination going to those who need it the most, which is what I'm hopeful for. So again, that's definitely something that that is important for us to keep an eye on hospitalizations and number fatalities in town. And again, obviously, at this point, you could see the total number of tests conducted since the beginning of the pandemic noted in the third bullet. What you'll see here again is the the map we look at every month for the total number of cases. What I guess I would note about this at this point is that it appears that the B one-one-seven variant is having an impact statewide, nationwide in terms of it's more infectious based on what we know. There's still more, we're trying to learn more about how deadly it may be, but it appears at this point it is certainly more infectious. So right now, what I'm sure many of you are hearing is that it's seems to be somewhat of a race between vaccinations and infections to try and bring these numbers down statewide. Again, with the governor reopening most of the economy on March nineteenth, again, all the Department of Economic Development guidance that was previously required is now best practices. So that's something that we're trying to navigate in town where a lot of the things are shifting from requirements to best practices. And so we're trying to make sense of that moving forward and how it impacts our operations. As I'm sure many of you are aware, we've been quite active on the clinic front. Again, I, for purposes at this point, now we're starting to have two slides now of all the clinics we've done. This particular side is of the clinics completed, starting in January, and then clinics through March and into April that we've done so far. We did start doing our homebound vaccinations, obviously, at this point, March thirtieth, and we've done several other homebound days with one or two teams going out into community, which has gone very well. We did go to the Housing Authority on April sixth, and we were actually at the Spanish community of Wallingford today, hosting a clinic. We, obviously, with the news regarding Johnson and Johnson, we had a, we are holding on utilizing that moving forward. We did switch at the last minute at SCOW this morning to Moderna. So that's something that, you know, obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna keep in mind as we move forward and continually plan outreach in the community as far as clinics go to reach those who are most vulnerable. On this slide here, really, what I was just showing is the document we provided on the town website showing folks how to get appointments and where to register with us for homebound vaccinations. As of right now, homebound vaccinations may be put on hold based on the most recent information provided by the federal government for Johnson and Johnson. We're just trying to evaluate how using a two-dose regimen will impact that that operation in and of itself. So something to be continued on that. This is a map of the state, obviously, with showing Wallingford almost has just under total fifty percent of our residents have had their first shot. That's quite high considering that there is a good percentage of folks that do not qualify that are sixteen and under. So I think we're doing quite well as a community in terms of vaccination rates, and it was an eight percent jump roughly from the week prior. So we're gonna be in the fifty, sixty percent mark in the not-too-distant future with with vaccine availability getting better and continuing to reach those who who are most vulnerable. Here are just some of the statistics I've been able to pull from the state. Twenty-one thousand five hundred and four residents in town have received their first dose. Ninety-six percent of our residents, sixty-five to seventy-four years old, received their first dose, and ninety-two point seven percent of those seventy-five years old have received their first dose. I do not have data for the other age groups, but as we could see here, that is quite high. I think that's a result of us early focusing on those those groups of folks based on age, and I'm hoping in the coming weeks, as the vaccinations increase in the community, we will be in pretty good shape moving forward. So that is all I have, Mr. Chairman, for this evening. I tried to keep it brief.
Well, I appreciate both the report and the brevity. Questions for Mr. Civitelli? Anything from the council first? Any questions from the public for Mr. Civitelli? Mr. Dering, name and address for the record, please.
Atchendearing of Sharon Drive. First of all, Mr. Civitelli, thank you again so much for all your hard work in this matter. Just one quick question. For the small percentage of people who are sixty-five plus and are yet to get vaccinated, is this people who are choosing not to get vaccinated, or is there some other reason why they have not been vaccinated? And then part two of that question is, is there any special effort being done to get these people vaccinated?
So at this point, it's a great question. So at this point, we do not know if that gap in percentages, those who are choosing not to I would assume at some point there is going to be a percentage of folks that are going to not be vaccinated. But again, if we are, we always knew that those that were sixty-five and older are at the highest risk, and that's why we targeted that group so heavily, because that's where we saw most of our fatalities here in town. So we are mindful of that, and if there are folks that are still having issues and they call us with getting appointments and they fit that age bracket, we certainly will try and accommodate those folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions for Mr. Civitelli? All right, there being none. Thank you, Mr. Civitelli, for all of your work and for this report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks, you too. All right, on to item six. Can we have a motion? Item seven. Yes, item seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a contract to purchase one hundred Barnes Road for police department.
Second.
Moved the second sounded like short tell.
It was short tell.
Great. Chief Wright, what do you have for us?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm here with Deputy Chief John Ventura. It's good to see you all again. Before you is a request, a formal request to approve the purchase of one hundred Barnes Road, the old three M site for renovation and ultimate use as a police department headquarters. I'm hopeful that you're all in possession of my report to you dated May of two thousand and twenty, and then certainly a subsequent report to you from the mayor dated April sixth of two thousand and twenty-one, which outlines the reasons why we are seeking a new location. I know I've been through it with you all numerous times. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have on the status of our building or the contents of of my report, and I believe the mayor's on as well for his report.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
It's just to outline for anyone not familiar, this is a contract to purchase one hundred Barnes Road. It, the building sits on nine point two acres approximately. It's forty-one thousand thirty-nine square feet. It was constructed in nineteen seventy-eight, expanded in nineteen eighty-five. The building is one story. It has been viewed at the request of the police chief by an architect who has indicated that it would be a very useful site and can be renovated to adequately handle our police department needs. So I don't know if the chief wants to add to that, but we can answer questions.
Chief, it might be helpful for those new to the meeting. If you could remind us of the inadequacies of the present station, I wouldn't know we've been, it was forecasted to be inadequate as early as two thousand and eight, and I think that time has since passed. So a summary of that would be helpful.
Certainly. So you're correct. In two thousand and seven, my predecessor, Chief Dortenzio authored a report to the council, I believe yourself, and Councilman Fishbein were new to the council at that time regarding the status of our building, its inadequacies in two thousand and seven, the need for significant renovation of the utilities as well as some of the common areas. A decision was made to engage the services of an architect to design a new facility to fit on the Wood and Kaplan property behind us. That was accomplished. That design was completed. The economic crash of two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight occurred. The price tag at that time was over twenty-four million, even on town-owned property, which rendered the project as a non-starter, obviously. Since then, we've continued to maintain the building to the best of our ability. A lot of what were cited in two thousand and seven as being deficient are still deficient today. The boilers and the air conditioning systems have reached their end of life. The men's and women's locker rooms are in need of a total renovation. The cell block is not up to today's design standards for the incarceration of prisoners even short term like we keep them. The parking was inadequate in nineteen ninety-five when I started here, and it, although it's gotten a little bit better out in the back, once we were able to move on to the wooden property, still to this day, we're using those Wallace Avenue lots as overflow. Building is in need of significant renovation to the windows, which are now failing, and we've done our best. It's a twenty-four-hour building. I think you've heard from me that it never gets a chance to rest. It's always open and it's always active, and it's something that we've more importantly outgrown. The manner in which police services are delivered today are significantly different than they were in nineteen eighty-five when we moved in here. Just now, we've taken over yet another office and shoved an operation into a tighter space so that we could roll out the mandated body-moral camera program, and that takes up a lot of room, right? So we've taken over another part of our forensic lab, which was in two rooms, and shoved that equipment into one room now and forced our investigators to work out of one other, one room instead of two. So as I sit here tonight, the fact that we're looking for a new space and taking a piece of property off the tax rolls and potentially investing a significant sum of money is not lost on us. We're very cognizant of of the economics behind it, but through a really significant overview of available properties in town, both already constructed as well as raw land in the space that we would need, this piece of property rose to the top very quickly, not only for its current state, which is capable of a renovation, but future expansion of the department for the next fifty years at least on this site would be something that I think is significant. So I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mayor.
It just, just as an example, and remember, this is over twenty-four hours, but an eight-by-eight-foot office, it's currently being used by three lieutenants and eight patrol sergeants. So you can imagine with the shifts changes and what goes on, an eight-by-eight-foot office is used by that number of people, and certainly some of the issues are the changing ways of of performing police work, and there's no way to expand. There's no way to find more space in the existing building. So I use that as an example. Clearly, a, there's a need to be addressed.
Thank you, Mayor. First questions from Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief. My first question, I know you had said that we would have to spend a significant amount of money, and I know that right now, tonight, we're talking about, I believe it's a three-point-three million, which would be to purchase the property and to do design architectural studies. I don't know if we're able to say it publicly, but I just want the public to know and for any counselors who, you know, might be wondering or just to refresh our memory, how much do we think this would be total to get this building to where it needs to be to house the new police department?
So we have a project budget worksheet that we've received from the architect that did the overview of the facility on our behalf. And he's included everything. Not only the building renovation, but in addition for Sallyport, a traffic storage outbuilding that we would need, a firearm, a six-lane firearms training range, a carport structure to get our fleet underneath, at least an overhang, and some site work that will need to go on there of sixteen million. But then when you add the soft cost for furniture and wiring and communications and all the legal fees and a permit fees, that adds another three-point-two million. And then with a project contingency of one point five, it brings the total to twenty-point-seven-nine-two million.
Okay, that includes the purchase price, correct? That includes the money we're talking about tonight?
No, I don't, I don't believe it does.
Okay, so that would, okay, understood. Okay, so I just want to make sure that I didn't, I just didn't want anyone to think that the the money tonight would be the total cost for the new building, because it's obviously significantly higher than than what we're discussing tonight. My other concern, and I know I had, I maybe brought this up earlier with you, Chief, but the location, and I don't know if I necessarily have a question about it, but just a comment. The location to me is is not ideal. And I've been thinking a lot about this since I saw it on the agenda, and while I understand the, you know, the constraints with the current location, you know, I would hope that maybe we could get a little more creative with the property we own behind the current department, and maybe do a separate building and have two different buildings on that same property, but I think having the police department in our uptown is a huge benefit, and you know, one of the great things about Wallingford is our uptown and how all the services are there, and the town hall is there, and there's a fire department there and the police, and there's a lot of activity at night with restaurants, and it's just kind of a reassuring feeling to know the police department's there, and I do, I really like the location we have now, and so the location of this new building being kind of on the outskirts, kind of in a more of an industrial area is is a major concern of mine. So that's that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, believe it or not, but I actually have that study that we got that night. And I've been reviewing that in conjunction with what we were hearing tonight. So am I to understand that stem to stern, the number here is about twenty-six million to get in there? Is that generally where we are?
Yes, I would say that that's well, it might be a little high, Craig, with, you know, with the construction price all in of twenty-point-seven, and then the purchase price in the design, we might be twenty-three, twenty-four million.
Okay, well, that's obviously a much better number, and, you know, I know in that report that we got back in two thousand and nine, they said if it was ten-month construction, and if we did it in two thousand and fourteen, that it would be twenty-three million six ninety-seven. So we've gotten some more use out of the current facility and generally at the same price, and I think it's inevitable. But I just had a couple of questions. You know, I know we had that meeting many years ago. There were certain checkboxes that you wanted. Why don't, Chief Dortenzio was, were you the chief then?
No, he was the chief.
Yeah, okay, I thought. There were certain checkboxes, and I just want to make sure all those checkboxes that were checked off with the study that was done back then are checked off in this project.
Yes, they are.
And you mentioned a six-lane firearm range. Is that for solely handguns or handguns and long guns?
Handguns and long guns.
Okay. As far as the location, you know, I, I would hope that, I mean, I know you're going to be going on to something else, but whoever takes your position, you know, knows about our downtown area and staffs accordingly. The fact of the matter is, you know, central location for law enforcement has to be somewhere, and we still have to get to the other side of town. We still have to get to Yalesville, you know. So I understand most of your activity is centered around Route Five. Getting it close to the Route Five and that area seems to make sense, and, you know, I defer to the professionals here on this. So, you know, I look forward to this coming to fruition. It's been a long time. So thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Up next, Counselor Shortell.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay? Because I'm on a different connection than usual.
You're coming through.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Chief, can you give a breakdown of the current police force from a gender perspective and what your limitations are with that and how that would change with the new facility?
Yes, so we are well above the state average of sworn female officers. Presently, we have seven. I presently have six openings, so if I were to staff the current vacancies, actually with either all males candidates or all female candidates, we would be growing out of one locker room or the other. The women's locker room has eleven lockers in it. It's a very cramped, tight space. The pipes continually freeze in there in the wintertime. We've done everything we can to improve the conditions for our female sworn contingent. The shower, it's not worthy of taking a shower in. So we've changed, right? So our profession has absolutely recognized the value of diversity and all of the benefits that come with that. And this space that we're talking about tonight will absolutely allow for future growth of you know, gender issues in both locker rooms and give a professional, modern building from which our workforce can work either out of or from. And I think you all are well aware that we don't necessarily dispatch from the department. We dispatch from certain areas of town where the officers are assigned. So to hopefully try to answer your question, Counselor Shortell, you know, we're continually looking to diversify our workforce, and this new project will allow us to really not have to worry about what should we do in the likelihood that we now are running out of locker room space for for our employees.
Thanks, Chief. That's what I thought, and I know from your past presentation to the council, that's that's in line with what you said. Thanks, Chief. That, that's what I thought. And I know from your past presentation to the council, that's, that's in line with what you said before. So I, I'm completely in supportive, supportive of this. I agree with Counselor Fishbein talking about deferring to the professionals in terms of, you know, leaving the center of town. I, I do find it reassuring that you're there, but I defer to the data and to the fact that where you're dispatching to is what matters. So I'm, I'm for this. My only other comment, and this is not really, it, it's just about this whole situation, and this is maybe more for the mayor and for the council. I just hope we can get creative with the old police building. I, I don't want to see us just sell it. I think we have an opportunity there. We, we could move adult ed from the train station to the new, to that old building, and we could kill two birds with one stone with that. So I just, I know that's separate from this, and, but I just, I mean, in terms of a, you know, action by the council and that's down the road, but that's my only other comment. But I am in full support of this. And thank you, Chief, for everything you're, you're doing.
Thank you.
Chief, am I correct to recall that there are, are there eleven patrol zones in town? Or is that, am I short?
No. I think we have twelve.
Okay.
But they are divided up depending on how many people we have working. So we can dispatch out to twelve zones and then if there are any other extra cars, we actually use them as extra cars in the more busy areas. But that depends on how many resources we roll out on a shift. So typically, it's six, seven, eight, or nine, you know, if I had to take an average. Just get a little bit bigger.
Okay. And we, we're, we're covering, covering all patches of town and and, and those officers are each taking their respective fraction of the lay of the land, if you will.
Yes, sir.
Next is Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief. Thank you very much for all the information you've been providing on all the work you've been putting into this. And more importantly, for your service to all of us over these many years. I want to take the opportunity to thank you for that as you're moving on.
That's my pleasure.
And I, I think, I have no question in my mind that this is a worthwhile project. It's been worthwhile and it's been needed. I was around when that report was given. And I too have my copy. And it's, you know, we've put this off more, uh, long enough. It, there's no question that we need to equip our police department with a, a new facility, period. So the question remains, is this a good choice? And I think you all hit a home run. I think a combination of the, the market and availability of buildings and so forth have, have provided you a perfect opportunity to find a building that, that will work for you. I understand the, the, a lot of people may have that feeling that, well, it's nice to have the police department downtown, but those are from days past. And I would just ask you this simple question. On any given evening, especially a busy weekend evening, how many, if any, officers are sitting around in the, in the, at the department waiting to be called out?
There shouldn't be any here, right? So they're all strategically placed around town.
All right. So the idea that they'd be around in case something happened is, is not even an issue. It's really just a matter, we would see a sign that says police department to make people happy, but from a, from a pragmatic point of view, from an operational point of view, having the, the facility in a more centrally located, uh, close to busy, busy streets to me makes, improves their response time and their ability to do their job. And I like the fact that this location provides the option of expansion if necessary in the future. If we were going to find some way to squeeze something into the property we own in the center of town, I think we'd have a hard time doing it. And I think we might find ourselves squeezed down the road as well. So I'm fully in favor of what we're doing here. And again, thank you for everything you've put into this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Laffin, next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you and congratulations, Chief, on your retirement. Thank you for your service. I just want to echo that with everybody else. And, and I, again, the same, I, I trust your decision and after all your years of service, you know, here we are congratulating you, but so I trust your decision that the location is, is a good one. And it totally makes sense. And Counselor Testa's point I, I wanted to make as well is just, I, I think most of your responses are probably made by cars that are already out patrolling, not just waiting for dispatch. So, so thank you for that. The, I, I'm going to echo to Counselor Shortell, let's, you know, take a breath and do some considerate planning on use of the the current police station going forward. It's in a great spot, and I just want to make sure we do it right. Yeah, you know what? That's it. It, I think it looks good. I know the timing, people might say like, oh, a lot of money, economy, pandemic. We knew this was coming for a while. We've been kind of planning on the backend. I think all of the issues that, that you listed before, I'm sorry it's taken so long. And it, it actually, it sounds horrible to even, to hear the whole list together like that. It, it, there is no better time to, to, to buy this property and to, to move this out. So thank you. I'm glad we're able to find something that, that fit. And I know it sounds pricey, but it could have been worse depending on where we had a purchase and what we had to build from scratch. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
I have to imagine there's a significant timeline savings by starting with a building that's fully framed, walled, and floored and merely coming in and having to do some significant partition work and construction of the Sallyport and that sort of stuff. Am I right, Chief?
You're absolutely correct. I'm not a building expert, but enough people have looked at that building as it currently sits on nine acres with the utilities all in already from the street into the building. Certainly, that to be a renovation of, of a lot of the interior. But I've been told that the value of that piece of property with the building on it as it sits today could be between eight and ten million dollars. If you had to build it, you know, from the ground up.
Right. Start from excavation and foundation and go up from there.
Yes.
Yep. Next is Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a couple of additional comments in regards to other comments that were made. As far as the location, I mean, it seems like I'm in the minority here, which is, which is fine, but as far as the location, there were some comments made that possibly what I stated about the location was either not having trust in the chief or the department, which is could not be further from the truth. I obviously have the utmost trust in our police and especially with Chief Wright. So that's not where that's coming from. Also, the fact that the, where the dispatch comes from in the zones, you know, I'm well aware of that, that, you know, they're not dispatched from the police department. However, when I think of the location of the having, or our current police department is the uptown, what I'm talking about is that when if I am in a restaurant in the uptown and, you know, we know with the parking, we talk about all the time, sometimes you maybe walk a block. You know, if it's at night and as a female and I'm walking to my car, I feel safer knowing the police department is there. When I go to the bank, when I go to TD Bank in the center of town, I feel safer knowing the police department is there. That is what I'm referring to when I refer to the location. Now, if the police department's not there, you know, could they dispatch somebody quickly? Sure. But my concern with the location is that I think in the uptown, which is a very pedestrian-oriented location, it has probably the, you know, much of the night activity with people walking around. You know, the bars, it, it's a safety factor for me. I feel better knowing the police department is there. And if, God forbid, something happens, they're right there. You know, I don't need to call and have somebody there. You can simply just walk right in the doors if you feel like you're, you know, in a threatening situation and it's there. So that's more what I'm talking about, the location. As far as the economy issue, I know from construction projects in business, things right now are much higher. There's shortages of supplies. I know lumber, for example, is up, I believe, four times in price. So I don't know if that's factored into the prices we have currently, or if because of that, if we ran into something that we would postpone these renovations. So I, I'm not sure, Chief, was that factored into the prices you gave us? Or were these, was this pricing kind of thought of before, you know, these recent events with, with construction prices going up?
So the prices that I have on the budget worksheet were given to us on March twenty-sixth. So I don't know, three weeks ago. So but I understand what you're saying. And I think until, you know, some of those hard costs are formally known through a, a bid process, I think it's hard to say. But we're only working off of information from three weeks ago.
Okay, so that's, so that's fairly current. But I do just want to bring that up, that, you know, construction costs lately are, you know, because of the pandemic, and I guess shortages of things have seemed to kind of go through the roof. The only other thing I wanted to bring up with the economy, and I know these are two completely different issues, but we had a lot of pushback when we didn't support the pool. And the reasoning for the pool was the economy and not having money during a pandemic. And this is, you know, whatever your thoughts were on the pool, this is far more money. So you know, I just want to make sure the arguments for things are, i- if the economy is the argument, then I think across the board, that needs to be the argument. And so, you know, that's, I just wanted to clarify those, those few things I brought up. Thank you.
So when I think about the present economy and I think about what's changed about real estate, we have a workforce that's gone from working in office buildings to working from home. And I think that is a significant factor in the present value of office real estate, which may have had something to do with the favorable acquisition price that we're looking at. I don't know if you've observed any of that, Chief, but, you know, I, I think that if we had been, if we had our eye on this building, this vacant building a year ago, before there was an impact on office space, I think we'd probably be looking at a significantly higher price. You know, the fact of the matter is that use for office buildings is is in peril, if, you know. And I think that was an influence on our ability to negotiate the price that I think those who participated in negotiation did a pretty good job. Next up, I have Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, you know, I, I enjoy the debate, just the, the issue about the community pool. You know, I have to offer that it's an apples-to-oranges comparison. You know, with all due respect to the community pool and those supporters, there is no necessity that we have a community pool. On the, on the other side, I think there is a necessity that we have a police station. And this is an identified need that we've been sitting on for ten years. And, you know, I think to a certain extent, there's a benefit of moving it out of where it is, because utilization of that rear area would preclude development, which may foster an even better upper downtown area for the town of Wallingford and, and not hamper the ability of the police department to do their job to protect and serve. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Shortell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Boy, I hate myself. I gotta agree with Craig again. But I mean, the, the fact is, it is apples-to-oranges. Public safety is a core function of government. So I don't think the comparison to the pool and the economy is, is valid at all. And I will also say, as arguably the biggest supporter of the pool on the council, I will fight anybody who challenges me on that. The fact of the matter is that that was a mistake. We should have done the pool last year. The economy is getting better, and that was a mistake. So those are my responses to that argument. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I think we've heard from all the counselors who have comments on this topic. Any members of the public who wish to speak, please let me know in the chat bar. Bob, name and address for the record, please.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. First to Chief Wright, and congratulations on your career change and your time with the town of Wallingford, I know was greatly appreciated. Just a quick question, the cost, no question, the police station, this has been discussed for so many years, but have you done a cost of buying the property and knocking down the building and building new to complete specs of what you want instead of trying to take an existing building and then putting yourself renovating it to fit your needs? Because sometimes that really doesn't work and you come into problems with that. So have you looked at this land or any other land and knocking down the buildings, the prices, you know, even if you overpay for it for a few hundred thousand, it doesn't make a difference. Because you're keeping this property forever or for at least thirty or fifty years. So that doesn't make a difference to the price. The question is, did you look at that cost, the mayor or chief or somebody like that?
Yes. Now, now I can't give you a price, Bob, because I'm not sure what that would be, but the architect at our request was very diligent in determining whether or not leaving this building in its constructed state externally or knocking something down and going up. You know, what is the value there? And it's his professional opinion that the building as it sits will withstand the renovation that we would request and that our department would need to become a functioning police department for the next thirty to fifty years. And I can only go on what he's told us.
And I, and I understand that. My question is then, because this building is approximately thirty-four, thirty-five years old, I don't know how old the roof is, mechanicals, are you replacing all that to start with? Or are you taking this down to not, opening the entire interior and then just building it new?
Yes.
For, for wiring, you know, all your electronics and all that type of stuff. That's where new versus rebuilt, especially on a, a stone building like this is very difficult to rewire.
Yeah. So the facility as it sits right now is absolutely a cavernous, one big room building. There are some small offices on the exterior of the main section that will have to come down. Those walls will have to come down. But because the building was at some point used as a data processing center, a large part of the building has a raised floor for communications, wiring, and, and gear. So and we hope to reuse that space to do the wiring that we need to do. So the building, for the most part, is already a big, wide-open space. But yes, we will take it back to the four walls and completely start again. The utilities, being the boilers and the air conditioning systems and the plumbing, will all be redone as new. The roof was put on more recently, and it's our belief that unless there's something found during construction, that the roof is appropriate as it is. It's not that old.
Thank you. I, I would just, again, just, I, if, I didn't realize, because I thought this was an office building, because that was the way it was portrayed. So there, there would have been offices in there, and then you'd have to knock down all these walls, rewire everything, bring in all that kind of stuff. And for what you needed for, for your cells and that kind of stuff with oxygen systems and stuff like that, it would be more difficult to bring that in. So that's what I was getting at. And that's where new construction, tear it, buy the property, just tear it down and build a new. If it's a million bucks more, two million dollars more to build new versus renovate, sometimes you spend a few extra dollars, but you get a better product. That's all I was saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call from comments from the public. Mr. Simon, your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. My name is Bob Simon, Ninety Northwood Road. Is there any reason why we can't maintain the building in town as headquarters and build a precinct in a small scale to accommodate the the chain shift, as you had mentioned before? So now you have two locations. And as Ms. Tata says, you maintain that police presence in the, in the town. Is, can we do a precinct instead of a whole big building? And that's my question. And maintain, maintain two places instead of just the one.
We looked at all of our opportunities and in a community like ours, that's structured like it is, a precinct And in a community like ours, that's structured like it is, a precinct, kind of a concept, to use your thoughts. Would it work? Sure, it would work. But then we're in two buildings and we'd have to staff two buildings and maintain two buildings where our operation and the manner in which we deliver services is best served out of one location. Could it be done? Certainly. But we look to, we're in one facility now. It's the operation that we're familiar with. So we look to find a location that would allow us to stay in one facility and still deliver the services that our community demands from us.
Okay, yeah, like I said, it just seems to be that you guys have such a great location in town. And the guys at a precinct, you're able to accommodate the increase in the size of the force. You have, you know, add the, you know, the range, whatever else you need, but still maintain that, that presence in the public. It's, to me, it's a big deterrent, you know, to provide, you know, for the town. And, you know, having, like I said, a precinct would, you know, solve the, solve the, solve the issues. But if it can't be done, it can't be done. So, all right, thank you for your time and best of luck to you. I have time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Last call for comments from the public. I think the only two we have on the telephone are Attorney Fossey and Attorney Farrell. So with that, before I call the vote, Chief, I am not going to congratulate you and say goodbye to you tonight because I think I'm going to see you a whole bunch before you leave this summer. So, but thank you for your work on this. You know, you could have sailed off into the sunset and left this project behind, but you've continued to work as I suspect you will, you will continue to work through your last day with us. So thank you for that.
You're most welcome, and it's been my absolute pleasure to be of service to our community. And I'm hopeful to see all of you certainly between now and, well, I'm not going that far. So we've received nothing but absolute support from you when we've needed it. Hopefully, we've answered your tough questions when you've demanded information from us. And I can assure you that we remain committed to serving our community in the best way that we always have. And I think you've heard me say this before, that it's not any single member here or any single member in our community. It's a combined effort collectively from all the departments and the administration of the town, the council, the nonprofits. So all we've really had to do when we've needed something is just ask. Just a simple ask has gotten us what we needed. So it's been certainly my honor to have been a member of this agency for the last almost 26 years now. So I appreciate everything that you've done, all of you have done for us. And it's been a pleasure, really, working alongside you, serving our community. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you again. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Fishpine.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yeah.
Marone.
Yes.
Shertel.
Yes.
No.
Testa.
Yes.
Sandri.
Yes.
Chairman Zervoni.
Yes, the motion passes. Up next is the public hearing on the funding, the bonding ordinance. I hereby convene the public hearing for the $3.3 million appropriation and bond authorization for the purchase of 100 Barnes Road. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. If anybody requests, I can post it on the screen. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Town clerk, we had a motion from Laffin and Fishpine, second from Fishpine and Shertel. Take your pick. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This is just the procedural motion. Any opposed? There being none, I'll call that all ayes. The motion passes. I will read the title of the motion. An ordinance appropriating $3.3 million for the purchase of 100 Barnes Road for a new police headquarters and the authorizing the issue of $3.3 million in bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. I now open the public hearing. Are there any comments or questions from the public? All right. There being no comment from the public, I close the public hearing. Is there a motion and second that the proposed ordinance appropriating $3.3 million for the purchase of 100 Barnes Road for a new police headquarters and bond, bond authorization be adopted?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so moved. Second.
Again, town clerk, we have a motion by Laffin and by Fishpine, although we only have a second from Counselor Shertel.
Second.
I'm going to disregard.
My second supersede, supersede is second.
Okay. Up first is the second or mover, Counselor Fishpine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I totally understand that the 3.3 is for the acquisition of the property and, you know, some stuff around there. But my question, how are we paying for the rest of this?
Mayor, Mr. Bose.
Yes, James Bose, Controller. You're, you hit the nail right on the head, Councilman Fishpine. We'll be back, obviously. The town will be back as more costs are known. This is to basically try to get us to the point where we are ready to put out or have put out construction bids. And at that point, when those bids are evaluated, price tag determined, this ordinance will have to be revised to be increased for the construction. If you look at section one of the item, you'll notice that it excludes construction. It, it basically has every other type of expense that you can think of with regard to not only the purchase of the property, but also what you would call architectural work that needs to be done, any testing work that needs to be done, environmental, et cetera, et cetera, development of bid documents, et cetera, et cetera, for construction. So at that point, when that's all known, there'll be another, there'll be a revision to this bond ordinance.
And will the, will it be a revision or will it be a separate bond ordinance? Why would we need to revise this?
We've, we've actually done most of these. It'll be a new ordinance. It'll be a new bond ordinance. Basically the same language with the exception of, of course, the price and the addition of any language in a body, especially section one, which describes it. And of course, that would include at that point, construction.
Okay, just to, just to be clear, you know, we're doing, we're authorizing 3.3 million here. And let's just say, for the purposes of argument sake, that the, the rest of it, to get to the, you know, cut the ribbing sort of stuff, is another $25 million, let's just say. We're not going to come back and make this a $28.3 million project. We're going to have another package that authorizes $25 million in bonds to be issued for that project.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, just to be clear. Okay, thank you.
Oh, no, hold on, Craig, no, that's, no, that's not. What happens is that ordinance will revise this ordinance and show the complete project costs up to that point in time. So the new ordinance will say something to the effect, and I'll ask Attorney Fossey to jump in if I misspeak, but it will say, an ordinance to revive an ordinance, to amend, I'm sorry, an, an ordinance. And it will show the new, the new total. Attorney Joe, is that, am I being accurate there?
Yes, our, this is Joe Fossey, the bond counsel. What we have done on projects, once we reach the design stage, is to amend the design appropriation to increase it to include construction costs. Perhaps the only time that we haven't done that is when we do a bond authorization for preliminary design and we start off with a much smaller number. But in the vast majority of cases, we stick with the same ordinance and change it to adapt to construction.
Is that for accounting purposes? Do we keep the package together or?
This is Joe Fossey again. It, it's, first of all, you could do it another way if you wanted to. You could adopt a separate bond ordinance. But it's the same project, so it keeps all of the appropriation and the borrowing authorization within one project. And in the process of authorization, it allows all dollars to be used for the project, including whether there are any dollars left over from the initial authorization. So it just seems to be a rational way to authorize a project that over time changes with respect to the appropriation and the bond authorization.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bose was just talking about section one of the ordinance. I don't, I may be missing it. I only see in our agenda, under item eight, there's a one, there's just the one paragraph, an ordinance appropriating 3.3 million. Am I, is it somewhere else that I'm not seeing the entire wording?
So did the packet not include the entire proposed ordinance?
Um, well, I'm looking at our agenda packet, and under item eight, it's just the one page that has that one sentence that was on the agenda. I don't see it. There's no sections or?
If you give me a moment, I'll be able to pull up the ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, we were, we were sent an email this afternoon by the town clerk, which I believe contains the document that is being sought.
This is the rest of the ordinance.
Is this just, I mean, to any of the attorneys, I guess, maybe Attorney Fossey? Is that just boilerplate language? Because I didn't, I didn't, I was working today. I didn't see the email that came this afternoon yet. So I just, I'm not, I don't want to vote on something that I haven't read. So is that just, is that boilerplate language in an ordinance? Or, I mean, I can try to pull it up now while we're talking, but?
This is Joe Fossey again. I certainly dislike the word boilerplate, but I have to admit it's boilerplate. And if you had it, you probably wouldn't want to read it. So, so there it is. I mean, the guts of it is section one that describes the project. And the rest of the ordinance authorizes the bond to finance the amount being appropriated.
Okay, thank you. I, um, I mean, I'm probably voting no because I already voted no for the, for the first part, but just out of, you know, for anyone maybe voting yet. I don't know if any other counselors didn't see that either today. So anyway, I have not read the whole thing. I just want to be clear. I didn't, I didn't see that in my email this afternoon yet, so. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, I see no other comments from the council, so I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Fishpine.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yeah.
Marone.
Yes.
Shertel.
Yeah.
Tata.
No.
Testa.
Yes.
Sandri.
Yes.
Chairman Zervoni.
Yes. The ordinance passes. With that, we have an executive session on item 10. Mayor, do we have anything for item nine?
No, Mr. Chairman, no.
Thank you. And can we have an executive session? We're going to executive session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 206B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the pending workers' compensation claim of Joseph Mule.
Second.
Moved and seconded, I believe that was Shertel, based on the volume of noise in the background behind him. So we are in exec, we are going into executive session. If you are not participating in the executive session, I ask you to leave the meeting. You can log back in after the meeting is locked so that you can experience the balance of it. I see somebody who's unidentified, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick that person out. I suspect Ms. Mooney has no part of our executive session.
Nor does Bob.
Bob. Bob, you're better than this.
This conference has no
This conference has no